Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. We'll call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have a copy of the agenda, so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone, so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared. These minutes are available in hard copy form at Village Hall, and also on our website at wilmette.com. Our village board meetings are also televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, and if you look up, you can see cameras in the corners of the room. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the village board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask, and policies we create. You can find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings on our website at wilmette.com. And I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmette who tune in regularly to Channel 6 to follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 431 pages, and we've had an opportunity to review all the information in the agenda packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points you really want us to focus on. Finally, we are community neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. So we're all here. We obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is public comment. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on a matter which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the board on matters which are on the agenda when that particular matter is called. So is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands? Welcome.
Hello.
Yeah, just lean right into it.
Okay, this one?
There you go. Yeah, either one.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Hatomi Yano. I'm a resident of Wilmette, and I also attend New Cheer High School, and this is part of my civics project. And today, I am here to demand more safety in the community. Specifically, I would like a requirement to put lights on emergency stop signs during emergency situations. On a snow day, right after winter break, I went shopping with my mom for a bake sale happening the next day. Everything seemed typical as usual, and I was sitting in the passenger seat looking at my phone, and suddenly I heard a small explosion right in front of my face, and my world went black. When I opened my eyes, I saw a man trying to help me get out of the passenger seat, and I realized we had crashed into another car. When the officer appeared at our site, we found out that we had missed a stop sign at an intersection that didn't have working traffic lights. There was a power outage in the area due to the snowstorm that happened today. The emergency stop signs, the foldable ones, were open to regulate traffic. In my opinion, the situation was lacking warnings about an upcoming intersection that didn't have any working traffic signals. The intersections before had working signals, and it was unexpected to see an intersection not regulated by light. According to Officer Prezy, who was the officer at the site, many people were running through the intersection without noticing the stop sign, like the car in front of us did. We were just the unlucky ones who had crashed into another car. New rules calls were made that day to the police department complaining about the danger at the intersection due to traffic that went through the stop sign without stopping. It was also pointed out that people tend to drive in the flow of traffic and therefore don't pay attention to the signals as they are supposed to, especially when there are any indications such as light on traffic signs. Wilmette itself is dark at night, and that is also a reason why we should put permanent lights on emergency stop signs. After the crash, flares were put below the stop signs, but drivers were still running through this intersection. Some drivers told how they saw the flare, but not the stop sign or even missed the stop sign itself, even though there was someone sworn. Therefore, I think it is necessary to make a requirement to embed lights on emergency stop signs, not temporary lights that attach to the rims. According to Officer Prezy, the swears below the temporary stop signs still don't provide enough visibility for drivers. To make the traffic safer, to reduce accidents, and to increase the safety of Wilmette residents, please do not overestimate the driver's ability to recognize dangers, but underestimate them. Please embed, add embedded lights on emergency stop signs.
Thank you very much. If I could suggest, if you would give your contact information to the woman right there, Bridget Berger, she's our Director of Public Works and Engineering, and she will respond to your request with an email, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Sorry. I also made a project, and it has lights on emergency stop signs in it, lights on.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you, yeah, thank you so much for coming. I just had a question. What intersection were you at?
It's Locust and Lake.
Locust and Lake.
Can I ask a question? Can I see that again, one more time, that you put together? Is that?
Should we bring it up? Do you want to bring it up front? We can get it on camera.
Yeah. I think it should go on camera, for sure.
Yeah. So actually, where, should we put it at the podium?
Yeah.
Put it at the podium, point it towards us, and then you will be on camera from, one of the cameras does the podium. Can you, can you hold it up?
And the button is where you're proposing?
John, turn it, yeah, John.
John, turn it around.
Oh, there we go. It's up there. This is quite the project.
I know. It is. That's why we should bring it up.
And I, I think Trustee Dodd's question was, what do the lights represent? Are those particular intersections?
Yeah, they're, they indicate the emergency stop signs on, so I looked through all the intersections, mostly, most of Wilmette, and wandered all the intersections, and found all the...
All the, all the stoplights that had the emergency stop signs on them as well?
They're supposed to have them where they're, where they have, where they have the traffic signals, according to the place.
Okay.
What direction were you going?
To, towards, towards, towards the...
West, okay.
So you were west on Lake, westbound on Lake?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's very impressive. Thank you.
Is there, is there anybody else who would like to be heard on a matter which is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to item three, then. Item three is the consent agenda, and as described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. All items that begin with the number three are on the consent agenda, and tonight, the consent agenda consists of, of the items on page one, beginning with item three-one, all of the items on page two, and then about two-thirds of the items on page three going down to item three-twenty, about two-thirds of the page, I guess. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item's not removed, if I remember the audience, and not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved, and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? May I see a show of hands? Moving on, I'll ask the trustees, are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved, and I'll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the three, and that includes item three-seven and item three-eight. So if you're here for one of those items, it was just approved. There'll be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda, so you are free to leave, more than welcome to stay, and it's too late, she's already left, and I haven't had a chance to remind her to stop by a restaurant downtown before she heads home. I guess I'm talking too slow tonight. Item four is the report of officers, so we'll start with the report from our Assistant Village Manager, Mr. Bremen, who's sitting in for Mr. Frenzer tonight.
I do have a couple of brief items. First, I just wanted to acknowledge our Public Works crews for their excellent work this past weekend in what were very difficult conditions with all the blowing and drifting snow, so kudos to Bridget and her team for a job well done. Two other items I have, first is, the village has obtained a million-dollar ITEP grant for downtown streetscape improvements on central Wilmette avenues. As part of the planning process for that, we have a community open house on January 31st from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. here on the second floor of Village Hall, and residents are encouraged, encouraged to attend and provide their feedback on the concept plan. We also have another second open house on February 7th from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. for our master bike and active transportation plan. We've sent out thousands of notices to impacted residents in the community, but all members of the community are welcome and encouraged to attend and provide their feedback on the initial concepts on that master planning, and we will move forward with that after the master plan open house, to a Transportation Commission meeting, and eventually, presentation to the village board later this spring. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is item five, reported by the Control Commissioner, and there's no report tonight, so move on to item six, which are Standing Committee reports. First up is the Land Use Committee, Trustee Pierce.
Item 6.11, I move we remove from the table case number 2018Z51 for the property at 2701 Orchard Lane.
Okay, so is a motion to remove from the table, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Are there any opposed? Okay, it's been removed from the table.
Okay, then I move we adopt an ordinance for a .98-foot side yard pergola variation to permit retention of an attached pergola at 2701 Orchard Lane in accordance with the plan submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we'll need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the Zoning Board. Mr. Adler, would you please come forward and summarize the issues in the case for us?
And John, I think I have the wrong one pulled up, so let me revise that. Great, okay.
Okay, so we have the computer, we don't have the slides, though. It's as simple as pressing that. Okay, here we go.
Okay, this is a request for a .98-foot side yard setback variation to allow a pergola to remain on the property at 2701 Orchard Lane. It did come with a negative recommendation, so we'll take five members of the village board to overturn that negative recommendation. If the village board does overturn the recommendation and vote yes to approve the variation, the pergola could remain. If the village board does not and votes no, the pergola will either need to be removed or altered to meet that .98-foot setback. As we talk about the Zoning Board, when they're hearing a request, we'll look at these variation standards to try to determine whether the request should be granted. The findings of facts in this case, it was unanimous recommendation. This was the finding of facts. Next information I have is just the plat of survey without the deck and the pergola drawn on, is, you could tell this is a corner lot, and corner lots do require a greater setback. In this case, the yard adjoining Orchard needs to be at least 21 feet, so it does, does push the, does push the house closer to the south property line, and in this case, they have a garage off the rear of the house, and so the rear of their property is actually adjacent to their garage, not to the living area. The applicant did get a permit to build the deck, so that was permitted, but evidently, when the deck was being built, the applicant's contractor indicated that they didn't believe a pergola required a permit, so the pergola went up. It was discovered by staff, and that's why we are here tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Adler?
Yes, so specifically, it's the pergola posts that are...
Correct.
...encroaching?
Yes.
What about the overhang? Is there, is that...
Right, that's encroaching, but we, historically, we've always measured those posts, so for when we look at the setback and what the relief is necessary, we look at the physical, the posts of the pergola.
Okay, so regardless of how much the overhang is?
Correct, yeah, yeah. In this case, the overhang's not that, that significant, so I forget what it is, but it's...
Is there a measurement for the overhang?
Typically, we would allow two feet.
Two, and where, where is this pergola, and where is the overhang?
I would have to ask the applicant if they know what that number is. I'm not certain what, what that number is. But the, as I recall, the, this pergola is setback four feet to the posts. Right, just around four, approximately four feet to the post, just under four feet is what they, they have currently.
And is, would there be a difference if this was, you know, again, corner lots, you've got the weird extra side yard? If this was at the rear, if there was a rear setback, is there an issue there? Or what, is it different?
Well, I mean, you could, probably the best way to answer that question is, you could see, in this case, the homes that go down Orchard that have, that aren't corner lots, if they would choose to put a pergola, it'd be much easier.
Right, because there's so much room because of the setback already.
Right. The other thing, which is interesting, is this house is pretty tight to the south lot line. It's a little bit, it's jogged, which is, which allowed them to at least get some deck in there, but it's pretty close to that south lot line, but that's not necessarily, necessarily atypical for a corner lot where, again, you have a 21-foot setback, where you might have a 10-foot setback if it was an interior lot.
Other questions for Mr. Adler? So there's no, I mean, this, this is, you already mentioned, I'm just gonna mention again, they did get a permit for the deck. This was just the add-on to the pergola that they, they did without, the contractor said, well, you just do it, and they really needed a permit for it.
Right, and given that they got a permit for the deck, and I truly believe it was just an honest mistake.
Yeah, right. As opposed to missing three permits for multiple, over multiple times. Right, okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay, so would the applicant please come forward?
Thank you.
So, yeah, so we've read the, we've read the report from the Zoning Board, so we're definitely familiar with the project, and then you just saw, Mr. Adler sort of gave us the summary of it. So I guess the, the thing I would ask you to focus on is addressing the concerns raised by the Zoning Board, and while John flashed it on the screen, I'll read it just quickly. The Zoning Board feels, finds that the request does not meet the variation standards of section 5 dot 4 dot F of the zoning ordinance, specifically, there are no physical conditions of the property that causing practical difficulty or particular hardship, the applicant created his own plight by constructing the pergola without a permit. So if you would just talk to us about hardship, that's usually what these cases hinge on, and go from there.
Yeah, so, thank you very much, good evening, everyone. So the hardship is, obviously, I was not that familiar with, with these processes in the first hearing, so the first thing, in the first hearing, we didn't actually have the correct measurement. The variation application at the time was for 1.19, and then the village staff, so there was a lot of confusion in our discussion of how far the posts were, because we didn't put the posts right at the edge of the deck, we actually moved it in, so it's, and there was a lot of discussions at the time, and we didn't have the exact measurements, so the, the village staff was nice enough to come out a couple days later, after the original hearing, to measure, and they determined that it's actually .98, it's not 1.19. So the, the vote was on the measurement that they had on the papers, which was 1.19. But definitely, as, as you saw in my, in my letter, which I assume you reviewed, it's the, it's the corner lot and the location of the property, and the fact that, actually, the backyard for us, it's the south side of the property that we use as, as our backyard, and that's why we, we built a deck at that location and the pergola at the same location. So if, if we didn't have the corner lot, we wouldn't be in a position to have this, this request for...
So the corner lot and the sighting of the house?
Yeah.
On that lot is what you're saying the hardship is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and for me, actually, when I take the garbage out and the recycling is actually on the, on, on the Locust side, so for me to go out to the kitchen, I have to go through a deck and, and the stairs that I have already built on the east side, so if I were to have to remove the post, it would, it would be in the middle of the stairs going down with my, with my garbage.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
Had you come in, had you been instructed by your contractor, you come in and got the permit, and they said, no, you have to move it back that foot, would you have still built the pergola?
Yeah, probably, yes. We would have just had to reconfigure the whole thing, yes, definitely, yeah.
So I'm gonna do something a little different, if there's no more questions for the applicant at the moment, hang tight here for a second. I'm gonna do something that's a little different tonight, in an ongoing effort to streamline our zoning board, our zoning case discussions. I'm gonna do a straw poll of the members of the board. I'll ask you if you're sort of leaning in favor of granting the variation, if you're leaning against it, or if you're still undecided. And then, from there, those who are leaning against will ask why, and the applicant can answer, or other board members can engage, but if, if it turns out that right now, we're unanimous in for or unanimous against, we probably can save ourselves a good 15, 20 minutes of discussion and, and move on. So that's my, this is, we're trying this tonight, first time. I didn't even mention to, to Mr. Adler that I was gonna do this. So which, which board members are sort of leaning in favor of granting the variance? Okay, so first try, and this works really well.
It's not clear, I bet, every time.
Yeah, I'll take one out of one. All right, so we're not gonna ask you any other questions, and you shouldn't, and by the way, you shouldn't say another word.
Thank you very much.
Because you now have seven votes in your favor, and you can only mess that up. But, and I'm not gonna go around the horn on this, but if there is anything that anybody would like to say on the case, I will open the floor for that.
I would also say, I think the Zoning Board did get it right. Again, very hard to do, because it was required to come to us. I think they, they couldn't find the hardships, and I do trust that this was an honest mistake.
I also thought it helped that staff was able to verify in the field the setback, and it's really just a tiny amount, and that, that made a difference to me.
Well, and when I drove by, I said, oh, I wonder what the neighbor thinks about that, and then, I don't know, when we got the letter of support from the neighbor, but it was within the next, like, 12 hours, and that, that sort of helps, you know, take off the one thing, if your neighbor was all upset about it, that might be a little bit tougher, but... Trustee Kersman?
In speaking with John about this, I offered the idea, and I offer it here, too, just that for new residents, perhaps part of their meeting, part of their welcome packet could include some, just a reminder that we hope you love your new home, but if you plan to make any changes, please know this, just as a preventionary mode, because we're seeing a lot of well-intentioned residents make honest mistakes, and it takes our time, and I like what you're doing, but I'm just thinking, prevention-wise, whether that's an idea to consider.
Yeah, and we've tried that in the past as well, it became a much more prominent part of the website, like, right in the corners, like, do I need a permit, you know? So, but a great suggestion. Trustee Dodd?
I would just build on, on Trustee Kersman's point, which is, this is, happens to be the second pergola that we've had in front of us that was done without a permit, and so we've talked about communication and things like that, and I would just encourage us with the spring communicator coming up to think about, you know, hey, reminder, these are the kinds of things you need a permit for, landscaping things, you know, pergolas, decks, you know, whatever, because this is the time that people are starting to hire landscape architects to do that, so that might, that would be a suggestion.
Yes, and a good suggestion. Staff's noted that?
Got it right here.
Okay. Trustee Pierce?
I agree.
Okay. Trustee Plunkett, we, okay. All right, so...
Thank you very much.
Well, we, we still have to vote. Hang on, one second. It isn't official yet. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the Zoning Board. An affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation has been overturned. Now, because it came with a negative recommendation, the actual ordinance will be adopted at the next meeting, but that'll, that'll be on the consent agenda, and really, no need for you to attend that meeting. Just to let you know, it's not final-final, but you just got, the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation was overturned. Next meeting will be done.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I just speak briefly on the, the original presentation from that, that young lady, because I live right there on the corner, so I actually see the accidents, and there's a lot of accidents at that corner, and it's actually, that happens to be the corner where I take the bus to work every morning, and I come home, and I know exactly the incident she's mentioning, because we could hear it from our, from our window, and actually, for bus commuters like myself, that was actually a very dangerous situation, because I had to wait there until the cops got there to be able to cross the street at night when the, when the lights were out, so that's, that's really a concern. So just wanted to second on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay, so we're back to Trustee Pierce.
Item 6.12, I move that we remove from the table case 2018Z37 for the property at 425 Lake Avenue.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? Okay, it's been removed from the table.
Okay, now I move we grant a request for a 248.5-square-foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation, a variation to permit a parking space in a required front yard, and a variation to permit the retention of an existing circular driveway upon demolition of the principal structure on the legal and non-conforming structure in accordance with the plan submitted for the property of 425 Lake Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, and seconded, and this item also comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it will also need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the Zoning Board. Mr. Adler, would you summarize the case for us?
Yes, I will not read the relief, but the relief is basically to allow the existing circular driveway that exists at 425 Lake Avenue to remain and be used when a future home is built there, and to be used currently by the home at 435 Lake Avenue. The existing driveway is over on the front yard impervious surface, the front yard being the first 45 feet of the property, and also because the entire circular driveway falls within that first 45 feet, there's a variation for a parking space in the required front yard. As was mentioned, it came with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This was a split recommendation, but will require five votes to overturn. If you do overturn, the variation request is granted, and the existing circular driveway could remain. If you would deny the request, the existing circular driveway would have to be removed, but if denied, and the applicant would want to construct a conforming circular drive, one that was slightly narrower but extended further into the lot to have the parking pad fall outside of the first 45 feet, you know, they would be able to do so. parking pad fall outside of the first 45 feet, you know, they would be able to do so. Now, one of the things that that would most likely do is result in an increase in pervious surface, not in the front yard, but on the lot. There would be more, arguably, I believe there would be more impervious surface on the property because it would have to extend further back on the property. Variation standards, here's the findings of fact. If we go back to that, that again, there was a majority and minority because it was a split vote. This is the property as it exists, the driveway that exists. This, that line there is the 45-foot line. So that shows you where the, basically how much further the driveway would have to be extended to fall if somebody was deciding to build a new driveway for a new home. It would have to be pushed. So the circle, excuse me, the part of the driveway fell outside of that 45 feet and would have to be narrowed to meet that front yard coverage requirement. And the last bit of information I have is the aerial, and this shows the properties to the east. The property to the west is the applicant's property where their existing circular driveway, which did get a slight variation to expand it on the south side of that driveway, but that currently is falling in the required front yard. The house immediately to the east is falling in the required front yard. You can see it does extend along the side of that property, but not all the way to the back. And then the house near on the corner has a, actually a parking court in the front. And then you go across the street, the one across the street from there, that's the rear of it. And you would see that cars would be parking what would arguably be the front of the, it's the rear of the property, but across the street along Lake Avenue.
So the, but there's three lots shown with the red dots. The left two lots are that, that's the applicant's home?
Yep. Yep. So yeah, there's four, there's four existing homes. And interestingly enough, this, all four of those homes have parking spaces in the required front yard. Or you could park cars in the required front yard the way the driveways are situated.
Well, and the location on lake near the bend there, you know, those are, those are the types of locations where you often have requests for driveways, you know, curb cuts and the like because of, you know, just the nature of the road at that point, a difficult sort of, you're not, that's a really lousy spot to be backing out, basically.
Yep.
There was also some provision in the code, I believe, in terms of to have a, two curb cuts, you have to have a certain width property?
Correct. Right. To have two curb cuts, you need a 75-foot wide property. This recorded width is 75. The survey says like 74.98, but the recorded width is 75. So this would be a property that would be allowed to have the two curb cuts zoning-wise. There's two different ways we look at this. We look at the zoning, that includes the number of curb cuts, depending on the width of the lot, the coverage. And then there's the engineering requirements that deal with if there isn't curb cut, when somebody would be granted a curb cut.
Right. But the existing curb cut doesn't have to be re-granted.
No, it doesn't. There's nothing, there's no permit that's being requested to deal with those curb cuts.
Right. So the only question here, oh, and the other question. So if they did not demolish the house, we wouldn't even be having this conversation? Correct. Yeah, we would not be having this conversation. It's only because they demolished the house and now you can't have a circular driveway to nowhere in essence?
Right.
Under our code.
Right. Right. And it's, it's because the driveway itself is non-conforming. That's why we're, why we're having this discussion. Because once you remove the house, you have to remove all non-conforming accessory structures, the garage and anything like that without, unless you request relief, you would have to remove it once you remove the principal structure.
Got it. Okay. So more questions for Mr. Adler?
I just want to clarify something that President Blinsky said. I mean, this, if they had, this is actually in front of us, I thought, because as soon as you remove the primary structure, it's like considered a new home. And then there's, so previous issues with the lot that were grandfathered because the zoning issues were different kind of don't apply anymore.
Correct. Correct. Yes. Any accessory, a driveway is considered an accessory structure as would be a garage or a shed. And if those are non-conforming in any way, once you remove the principal structure, we expect you to bring the whole property into conformance.
And I also just want to clarify too. So assuming brand-new house, starting from scratch, this driveway did not exist, they would be allowed to do a curved driveway with two curb cuts. It would just have to be deeper, so likely, you know, maybe a little bit narrower and deeper, so as to not have it all in the front yard set.
Assuming those curb cuts exist, assuming, yes, if the curb cuts exist, if the curb cuts are not there, no. Your, my guess is when you have an alley and Bridget could answer this question, but you will not get a curb cut if you have an alley. Most of the time there's, I believe, standards for appealing that decision. But in this case, because the two curb cuts exist, you're right, you could reuse those curb cuts in a, for a conforming driveway for a new home.
Okay. And would that, that new driveway would probably have more impervious surface than this current driveway?
Right. And that was, that was sort of the purpose of showing you this. Now, remember, this driveway is probably three feet wider than a driveway would be if it's coming in onto the property and then further onto the property. But you would really have to have that driveway be straight and then curve, excuse me, past that 45 feet to be able to meet the coverage in the front yard. So this is one of those odd situations where our impervious surface coverage maximums in the required yards would force somebody to actually put more impervious surface on the property.
And one more thing. So we have the two curb cuts now. What if, you know, assuming, you know, new property, all of that, could you have one curb cut? Could you get rid of the two curb cuts and put in one curb cut? Or because it has an alley, you're stuck with what you have?
If, if you wanted to abandon one of the curb cuts and just use one of those, I believe the engineering department would be okay with that. That would be, I.
The records show a very non-committal shrug from Ms. Berger.
But if it's an existing curb cut and they're not asking for any change to one of those curb cuts, if they, if they wanted to remove those and put a curb cut in the middle, my guess is, no, you wouldn't get that. Because then you're asking for a permit for a new curb cut and I don't see how you would meet the criteria.
So from a practical point of view, this is, if you have a curb cut, it's yours and the village isn't in the business of taking it away from you?
That's my understanding. But again, I would defer to.
Can I?
Go ahead, trustee Pierce.
I'll let neither Jeff or Bridget correct me, but my understanding is the standards for engineering to make a decision on curb cut, the standards are actually not defined in terms of it's, I view it as more discretionary on the village engineer's part as opposed to a zoning decision, which I think, we've got very clear standards as to when we make a variation. But if the engineer is going to make a, let's say, you know, a decision, an exception, let's say, I don't see in our code, here's what the exceptions are based on.
I'm sure Bridget will answer this better than I will, but there are three separate sections in the public ways portion of our code that deal with the curb cuts. They're all combined. But there is to the point that subjective catch-all that says if there's a substantial hardship and if it makes sense essentially that the engineering department can grant the curb cut.
Right.
So I think that's what you're alluding to. There is that catch-all.
Right.
Good evening. If the village board were to deny the variance tonight for the driveway, the engineering department would likely revoke the curb cuts because it would make no sense to have two curb cuts that don't lead to anything. And then at such time as the applicant comes in with a new property, then you'd be starting with a brand-new blank slate as far as how that home and the driveway would be developed. With respect to a brand-new lot, yes, if we have alley access, you're encouraged to use it to preserve and protect the integrity of the right-of-way. However, there are standards. There's an option to apply for an exception whereby you don't use the alley access and you can apply for a front yard access. Or in a lot of cases, we have people who have existing front yard driveways, they want to keep it, but also build an alley access. So there is a detailed process in the code for how we go about those exceptions.
Other questions for Ms. Berger? Okay.
I actually have one. This might be for Bridget, it might be for somebody else. Our case last week, they were changing around their access. And I remember there was letter from engineering saying, we'd like you to take care of stormwater on-site to kind of offset some of this extra impervious surface. Might that be something that could happen here?
We often require that when we allow somebody the ability to retain a front yard driveway and build a new alley access. We incentivize them to reduce impervious coverage by making the second access with a permeable product. So we use that quite frequently when we approve these permits.
Okay. All right. Mr. Adler, if you'd come back, because at least I've got a question. I'm sure we're not done quite yet, the board. So let's say this was done in one whole swoop instead of, instead of knocking down the house and saying we were going to do something later. They certainly could have come with plans. So first off, if they didn't knock down the house, we're not having this discussion.
Correct.
It's an existing, non-conforming, legal non-conforming structure and a legal non-conforming driveway. So if they came, if they, instead of knocking down the house, which my understanding from at least the letters of the neighbors, it sounds like that might have been an improvement. But if they, instead of knocking down the house, they came and they said, look, here's our plans for our new house. We're going to start from scratch. They certainly could apply for relief to retain the driveway. They would need relief because it would be a new home. But they could certainly apply for relief to retain the driveway in conjunction with building the new house, right?
Yes, yes.
And we'd be having the same discussion we're having now, which is, if we don't grant it and they want to keep the two curb cuts, which they probably would, they're going to move the driveway back and there's going to be more impervious surface so that they get it outside of the 45 feet.
Right.
And this, this home was built, or the driveway was built, I don't remember what it said in the case, a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Eighty years ago. Okay. So at the time, presumably conforming, there wasn't any restriction on that?
The front yard coverage.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay, I'm going to call the applicant up then. Welcome. Thank you for your patience tonight as we go through the intricacies of our.
I guess I'll dispense with my prepared remarks.
Before he starts, I just want to say that he said something to the effect of it would be a driveway for 435. It's not a driveway for 435. In fact, we built a fence all the way across the front. It's not used, we're not using it as a driveway. We're not parking anything on it. There's a fence that covers it and doesn't have automatic opening or anything. So it's not being, we're not like using it as an accessory driveway for the house we currently own.
Yeah, this is helpful because if you drove it two weeks ago, when it first showed up on the agenda, you saw the driveway. If you drove it yesterday, you did not see the driveway because of the snow. So thank you.
The handouts that I gave are just some pictures of what it looks without snow. And then the others are my attempt at a Google map exercise to show the areas in East Wilmette, off of Sheridan in particular, and the first three blocks that have driveway access to the streets. And, you know, that basically it's somewhat commonplace. And this is from Chestnut down to Linden Avenue. So the red markings are houses that either have a circular driveway or driveway access on the streets. And the point being is, I think that you all are well aware of, is that, that the lakefront is a very wonderful amenity for our village, but it does present some issues for our neighborhood. And in particular, you know, the lack of parking and traffic during the summer weekends. And the, in this block, the 400 block of lake, the traffic is pretty heavy, especially on those weekend days. And to get in and out, it's critical from a safety and security point of view, in my view, to have the ability to either enter onto lake or, right now on 435, we enter onto Fifth right by the stop sign. So. And then insofar as why we tore the house down, I just wanted to, and I think the record reflects, that when we, our neighbor died unexpectedly last year and her son put the house up for sale. And, you know, we love our house at 435 Lake, but it's multi-leveled and it's a large house. And as we get older, we wanted to be able to build a new house that was, you know, more senior-friendly and more usable by us. And we did, we were originally planning to keep the 425 lake, but the cost of repair and to keep, to make it rentable, just made it economically and feasible. And so what we felt that was better to remove the house and landscape the yard and make a somewhat of a little pocket park while we went about the business of getting a design for a new home.
Kinder to our neighbors than to just let it sit there because it would have cost, the contractor told me it would be $100,000 to make it where someone could live in it as a rental. And that just didn't seem like a real smart plan.
Because your plan was to make it a ranch house at some point in time?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, right. Okay.
And I would note for the record that 31 of the, or 34 neighbors to whom we sent notices took the time and effort to submit expressions of support or no objections to our, to our variances. And we're very grateful for their support and friendship. And not a single neighbor has made an objection. So.
You want to talk about the hardship?
Yeah, the hardship. Well, the hardship, as I said, is the safe, safe and secure ingress and egress from the property.
Especially as we age.
And then the other hardship is this question about new construction, et cetera. You know, I think that some members of the zoning board of appeals maintain there was no difficulty or hardship because we are not using the property currently. But to the contrary, a denial of our application would require us to go to the expense of removal of the driveway and curb cuts and subject us to the vagaries of a new process. And because Lake Avenue is a state highway, if we lost the curb cuts, the likelihood of us getting a curb cut is very low, in my view. And you'll notice that everybody on our side of lake, you know, has front yard parking or front yard access. So.
And our concern was that as we age, when a car currently pulls up, like a cab or an Uber or a UPS guy, there's always honking and people pulling around. And it's very difficult there, especially in the high-traffic times. And it's dangerous because as you can see, well, you saw from your earlier slide, that slide around fourth is a blind spot. And so you have someone coming around and then there's a truck parked delivering. And it's, it's difficult and dangerous. And we thought that as we get older and our friends get older, it would be much safer if people could drive out forward and they could come to visit it. Because I, my concern is, I understand the desire for alleys and garages in the alleys, but I don't think on a, on a weekend, there is no parking within three blocks of this house. And so for someone, I feel like as we build this house to get old and, and no one would ever come see us again. So that's my concern.
Don't feel sorry for us yet.
Are there questions for the applicant? Okay. All right. I did pretty well on the first try of this. We're going to try this again. Again, I'm going to take a straw poll just that might help guide our discussion and our debate here. So I'll ask who's leaning in favor of granting it, who's leaning against, and who's not sure. So who's leaning in favor of granting it? Okay. Wow, we're two for two. We're going to do this all the time. So once again, you just saw that all seven are in favor. So my advice, not as your lawyer, would be not say another word.
I've witnessed that before.
All right. So is there any discussion that anyone wants to have? Trustee Dodd?
I just want to have a discussion with the trustees. I had a question. Or in terms of this particular application, would we consider at all, because there is a, so I agree with the things that they've stated in terms of parking and safety and things like that. Clearly, it's consistent with the neighborhood. So I agree with what's going on. I think what I want to caution us, or what I want to be careful of, is that once they do their plan, you know, that we don't also create a driveway potentially in the backyard too, because that's actually not consistent with the neighborhood. And so I'm just wondering if we would, if the trustees would be in support of, similar to what we've done at other cases, which is because there is an impervious surface request, if that impervious surface, they, the, first I'm interested in if the trustees would be in support of this, that we would require that that impervious surface then get reduced in the backyard. So.
I think, I think my thought on that is that if we didn't grant, we're already reducing impervious. Because if we didn't grant it, they would end up putting more impervious.
They would end up doing more, correct.
So I don't know if you need to do that. And it's, it's, remember, this is just the front yard impervious. It's not, like, it's not a big It's not, like, it's not a big driveway that goes back and forth. It's, it's just the fact that the impervious is in the front yard.
Right. But we don't know what they're going to do in the backyard. And we don't know for sure, I mean, just in terms of, we don't know for sure, I support and, the foremen's are dear friends of mine, and of course, they're going to try to develop this, but we don't know for sure ultimately, once they get into it, what will happen. And who knows if somebody else, they decide it doesn't make sense to do that. And so then a developer comes in. So all I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to protect that we, that there, there could be significant, because of the size of the lot, there could be significant impervious surface in the backyard. Because this is only a front yard impervious surface. And so that's why I was proposing we request that this get applied to the backyard and service, this variance get reduced from their allotted backyard impervious surface.
One of the things that we did when we landscaped the yard temporarily, well, for now, is we added rain gardens at the back edge of the property that will remain to improve the, because the drainage wasn't good on this property and it wasn't good on our neighbor's property. So we added rain gardens that pull water from, have actually improved the water situation in our whole area of the neighborhood. So we did, you know, we were aware of that and, and did try to address that.
And we intend to retain the stormwater management system that we put.
And that's why we put it at the back edges so that no matter what we did, that would be there.
Thoughts on that?
I will always appreciate thoughts along those lines, so I think that's, it's a great thought. I, I think I'm hearing from President Blinsky and feel comfortable with that, with how it's proceeding, but I will always appreciate a colleague raising that issue.
I guess my thought is you always have the entire lot impervious surface numbered to consider, right?
Yeah, a lot of coverage and the like.
Lot of coverage.
Right. Mr. Adler should come up and, and you can't count on me to get that right. We need, we need staff, remember.
Comes to the, the, the house and the garage, the, the, you know, the, the non-flat surface coverage, correct. But when it comes to impervious surface, we only limit impervious surface in the required front yard, again, the first 45 feet of this property, the required rear yard, approximately the rear 32 feet of this property, and then the side yards. The remaining area, the buildable area, as long as you're meeting the grading and drainage and you're able to do that properly, that impervious surface, the flat impervious surface is not, not limited there. Again, it's in those yards.
Actually, that's a really interesting point, though, that Mr. Adler makes, which is because this is new construction, they're going to have to take care of their water. Not, and they don't have the full MWRD requirements, right, because it's residential, but they're not going to be allowed to make the water situation worse for the neighbors, which is our, which is generally our major concern on impervious. The sort of aesthetic nature of the impervious surface is covered by what Mr. Adler is talking about, the front, rear and the side yards. So that might, you know, I mean, and Ms. Berger, you want to come up? They just confirmed that whatever their plans are, you know, they're going to need a grading permit and they're going to need to basically not make the water situation worse than, than, worse for the neighbors, right?
Absolutely. Because this is a combined sewer area, they won't be allowed to tie all their stormwater into the sewer, so they'll have to manage it onsite using green infrastructure, bioswales, rain gardens, French drains to promote infiltration and reduce any burden to adjacent neighbors.
So in, in the case, in the case that we were talking, that you were referencing, I remember the case, there wasn't new construction going on. This was just, so you can't do it later. So I sort of feel like there's, the guardrails are already in our existing process to protect against what we want to protect against, which is not making stormwater issues worse. Does that make sense?
I thought it went into their ordinance to protect, so actually, I'm confused by what you're saying with the previous case, because I thought it was part of the condition of the, of us granting that particular variance, which does, if they did do any addition, it would apply to that.
Right. But they weren't, but they weren't doing, but they weren't doing anything. This was, these people are going to do something and we know they have to follow the rules when they do it. Otherwise, otherwise, there's no more impervious surface, right? It's just the driveway. That's all, I guess I'm saying, is that this was, the, 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 the other case, there wasn't a new construction contemplated after the fact. It was just, you know, you can't, you can't, you got to, you've used up some of your impervious surface up front.
Yeah, they put the patio in the front yard.
Right, exactly. So they, so the limitation was you couldn't do it in the back too. Other thoughts? Other comments?
I, well, I'm just, would like to say why I'm in favor of it. You know, the fact that it's an 80-year-old driveway, I think there, you know, as the, and as Bridget was mentioning, there are situations where curb cuts are granted where there's an alley. And I think this is, you know, an appropriate situation. When you look at the character of the neighborhood, I think that's one of the big reasons when exceptions are granted. And I think as the map shows, as well as the uniqueness of the location. So I think, you know, safety is a big issue and I think that's very appropriate to grant this.
Yeah, and I, I agree from, in particular with the bend there on Lake. That's just a, that's, that's just a nightmare navigating, you know, when you're on the road, not to mention trying to enter the road.
Right.
Yeah, those are my thoughts, exactly. I, I agree. And I wanted to compliment you guys, Kevin and Jeanne, on the way it looks. I went by there last week and it really looks like a little park. I think it's a big asset to the neighborhood now. But I agree too, you know, that driveway has been there a long time. It is an unusual situation. I think between the requirements for new construction with keeping rainwater onsite and the rain gardens that you guys have put in, I feel comfortable with the whole thing.
Yeah, and I think I would add, if they did come to us with a new house and said we wanted to retain the driveway, I'd probably be in favor of that too, because it would, you know, if it, if this all came in one package with the new house planned, why tear up the, the 80-year-old driveway to build more driveway? You know, that would be, I think that makes sense, so. Dan, Santa?
I thought that's not specific to this application, but in the, in the conversation of it, you know, we refer to rain gardens, but we don't have standards for what constitutes a, a rain garden. And I think that would, that would serve us well in the long term to sort of, you know, how are we going to hold to a resident offering this or that pertaining to a rain garden? A native plant garden is not the same as a rain garden. And I, and I make that mistake myself as, in, in regards to my, my former home. So I'm not, I'm not exempted from that, but I do think that's something that we should consider working on.
Okay. Noted by the staff. All right, any further discussion? So trustee Dodd, it sound, I don't hear.
It was just, I agree with everything the other trustees have said.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It will need five votes to overturn the recommendation. An affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the zoning board of appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. And the motion carries, the zoning board of appeals recommendation has been overturned. And just as I said to the prior individual, so we overturned it today. The actual adoption, the ordinance will be at the next meeting and then you'll be all set. That'll be on the consent agenda. There's no need for you to attend the meeting.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Trustee Pierce?
That concludes land use.
Finance committee trustee Sullivan?
There's no report this evening.
Administration committee trustee Dodd?
All items on consent.
Municipal services committee trustee Wolf?
All items covered on consent.
Public safety committee trustee Kersman?
No report.
Judiciary committee trustee Plunkett?
All items covered on consent.
There are no reports from our, wait. Yes, there are no reports from our special committees. There's no new business to discuss. So item eight is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned at 8:30.